Williamson County Regional Planting Commission is now called to order. And we do have a quorum. Do we have any announcements, staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items number thirty-two, thirty-three, and forty-four have been withdrawn. We do have a revised consent agenda in front of you that's reflective of the revised report for item ten that's also in front of you. We also have a revised report for item thirty-seven. And just a reminder, for those of you who have not completed your four hours of training, you still have time to do so. I'll send out the TAPA link. I know that some of you have finished it, but for those of you who haven't, if you will, submit to me just telling me that you've done it for our records. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we would have the public comments, and we have none to at this time. So we'll go to the minutes. Do we have approval on the eleventh, the fourteenth minutes? All have a chance to read them? Any questions? Motion? Motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We'll go to the consent agenda. We will take it as a whole unless some of the members here have items they'd like to pull out separately. Ms. Sharon, I understand that you will be accusing yourself of this.
Accusing myself of the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have sixteen and nineteen I'd like to pull out. Okay. We have item sixteen first, please. My question, and they're both the same on item sixteen and nineteen, and the question I had on that was, according to what I read, the landscaping hasn't even started yet, and we're going into the dead of winter, so do we need to be more than six months out for that bond?
Six months would be April, is that right? May?
Right.
I think it would be May, and that should be a good time for planting.
But that, isn't that for whether the, is taken yet, or the growth is taken, or is that just for planting?
That's for planting, and then it would be on a maintenance period that would, you know, make sure it survives.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All in favor of the accepting the consent agenda? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All business, item number thirty-two has been withdrawn. Item number thirty-three has been withdrawn. Item thirty-four and thirty-five on the consent agenda. Item number thirty-six.
Thirty-five. Thirty-five, thirty-six.
Thirty-five and thirty-six?
Yeah.
Is thirty-four on the consent agenda?
No, I'm sorry, Don, I thought you were asking that.
Okay. Okay.
Did you pull a couple of things off of consent for separate consideration?
Yes, and then he just answered what they were on that.
But if you said you want it pulled from consent, then it wasn't in consent vote, so we'll need to take action on whatever that item was that was pulled from consent.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll just start with item number sixteen. Performance bond for landscaping located on Lampkin Bridge Road. All in favor, do we have a motion on accepting that? Second. Motion made in second. Motion carries. Thank you. Item nineteen.
I'm sorry, is there a vote?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number nineteen, performance bond for landscaping located on Lampkin Bridge Road again. Do we have approval? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to item number thirty-four. The preliminary flat review for Harry T. Drum lots four and five, large lot easement subdivision containing two lots on ninety-six point oh eight acres located off Drury Lane in the first voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project is located off Drury Lane. It is approximately ninety-six acres. It is a large lot easement subdivision. That will be the fourth and fifth off an easement that already serves three lots, so a total maximum is five, and it's going to plan, it's having to be reviewed by the planning commission because it is the fourth and fifth off the easement. It consists of these two lots, the lighter lot is lot one, the darker lot is lot two. And then the existing fifty-foot easement, you can see identified, actually you can see Drury Lane has a label in red. Existing fifty-foot ingress egress utility easement is shown in red as well along the bottom of the two lots. Natural resources protection standards have been met. Water will be provided by individual wells. Wastewater is, will be handled via onsite septic, and staff recommends approval with standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you come forward, sir, and give us your name?
I am Gabriel Hunsaker, representing the client from Chaplain Associates, Mr. Tom Harry Drury.
Okay. Would you hold it? We asked, any questions may come up.
Yes, any questions?
Any questions of the applicant or of staff in this item? Seeing none? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to accept item number thirty-four?
Do we have a second?
Got a motion in a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item thirty-five and thirty-six were on the consent agenda. Item number thirty-seven, final flat review for Wiley, section one, containing sixteen lots on one hundred and fifty-four point two-four acres located off of Del Rio Pike in the tenth voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant has requested deferral to the February twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. Staff concurs with this request.
Have a move for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to non-residential site plan, item number thirty-eight, B. Miller Recycling Location located on sixteen points five-six acres at nineteen-seventy-nine Carter's Creek Pike in the ninth voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting deferral until the February twenty-twenty-five meeting, and staff concurs with this request.
Do we have a motion for deferral? Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number thirty-nine, B. Arrington Reserve located on one hundred and thirty-one point four-nine acres at sixty-two sixteen Patterson Road in the fifth voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property is approximately one hundred and thirty-one point four-nine acres in size. It's shown here in red. It's located on Patton Road, and it is west of Horton Highway. You can see Patton Road outlined in red, and Horton Highway is to the west. They are requesting approval of a farm winery, and the farm winery will be accessed, let me see if I can go back here, by the two stars that bounced on there. I don't, I'm not sure why it's coming up two at a time for us. The applicant is going, is proposing to build a three-story, nine thousand nine hundred square foot building, which you can see here in green. This will be for the creamery and the cidery. The building will also be used for events associated with the creamery, or, excuse me, farm winery. The existing buildings, which you'll see in purple and the brown, will be used for storage. They will be harvesting fruits from the orchard, which you see has come up in green, and they are proposing to host a limited number of special events outside of those permitted with farm winery. These events will require temporary use permits, and you'll see the parking will be accessed from the blue on the screen, and the attendees will be taken down the path that's in green to the facility. Natural resource protections have been met. There's a traffic impact analysis was performed by the applicant and reviewed by the county's traffic consultant, and the recommendations from the traffic consultant, which are outlined in the staff's report, have been added as conditions of approval. Water will be served by Milcroft and Utility District, and wastewater will be handled via the existing Cox Slad Treatment and Disposal System. And finally, staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in your report.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Thank you. Curtis Stewart, landscape architect with T-Square Engineering. Happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question.
Yep.
Do you have a? What is your plan for the getting rid of spent lees in, as far as the winemaking process? Obviously...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
What's your plan for spent lees or getting ready, getting rid of grape skins, fruit skins, things like, things like that?
The applicant, the owner would have to, I don't, I don't know that.
Okay.
I guess, in similar vein to Lee's question.
Similar vein to Lee's question, and this might be a staff question as much as anything. I assume there's some sort of grease trap requirement in, in the process of making cider, making wine, and whatnot throughout. Is that a part, is the review of that a part of this site plan approval, or does that fall under wastewater approval?
So that will fall under both the wastewater approval and the building permit process as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. So it's gonna be, you're gonna have special events on occasions. Is it open to the public? Is it daily?
Yes. Well, the special, the special events may be targeted for a specific reason. I don't think that plan is, you know, set in stone as to who's gonna be coming when, or what these events might be. I'm gonna hopefully safely assume that some of the events would be open to the public, sure.
Is this gonna be open daily for visitors, or is it?
Seven days a week, I'm not sure about that. Louis, do you know?
Five days a week?
I don't, that's a programmatic issue with the owner. I don't really know that.
How far is this from Horton Highway? Like, how many miles down Patton Road?
Approximately, I don't have the report in front of me, it's outlined in the report, one point three miles from Horton Highway.
Okay. My concern always is like the traffic coming from Patton Road, especially if you have events that can house up to two hundred and fifty people, as I noted on here, or no more than two hundred and fifty, or if it's a daily, you know, just the traffic flow out onto Horton Highway. I know you're gonna do some improvements there on Patton Road, correct?
It'll be all onsite for, there are no offsite roadway improvements associated with this, with this use. Everything is onsite. And so during the special event process, when they, they'll have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for some of them.
Right.
Board of Zoning Appeals will review the, the safety aspect of it with regards to the, the traffic entering Horton Highway.
Can we find out if it's gonna be open daily, and like, how many, what hours?
Yes, we can find out.
Okay.
I'm looking at the...
So Commissioner, it will be open from Tuesday through Sunday from eight, eight AM to nine PM, according to the letter of intent in your attack, your packet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
No, you're fine.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yep.
So it looks like not, we don't have it up here, but in the hard copy, no more than two hundred and fifty attendees per event. So that's, so there could be two hundred and fifty, but no more than two hundred and fifty attendees?
I...
Per event?
I don't know that there's a cap on that. I do know with the traffic impact study, the results came back with that, and, and the, the owner agreed that when there are events, and I believe I heard him say there were two, maybe three a year, I'm not sure, it wouldn't be a weekly thing, but that security and traffic control would be a part of that, on the parking that's off to the side.
Okay.
In the back. Yeah, that's, that's all part of his, his plans.
Right, yeah.
If and when there is an event.
I understand.
Again, I don't know the yearly programmatic schedule of all that, but I don't, I've never heard him say, yeah, we're gonna have these once a month or something.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hatcher, if I may add, that the two hundred and fifty is capped by the zoning ordinance requirements for the farm winery.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes.
So I apologize. I skipped over the letter of intent. On here, it says, expected number of customers throughout the day would be approximately two to three hundred throughout any given day. It's a lot of people in a day, which is great for them, I guess, but again, I'm assuming that through the traffic study, they were fond with that traffic coming out on Horton Highway?
Yes, ma'am. We have a recommendation for approval from our traffic consultant.
Okay.
I have a question, and this may be, goes for the zoning appeals with you. How do you intend, what are the intentions of keeping track of how many people are on at any one time coming on the premises? If you're gonna have it to two fifty?
I couldn't answer that question. I don't know. That's a programmatic issue with the owner.
Okay, thank you. Is that something that would go through the zoning appeals?
Mr. Grohan, you were asking if these go to the border zoning appeals. The zoning ordinance allows certain events associated with this that don't have to go to the border zoning appeals.
Right.
Anything beyond that would be subject to the normal special events, some of which would have to go to the border zoning appeals if they're a certain size.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out how they kept track, how many people came on board. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have a motion on this? Item thirty-nine?
Motion to approve. Second.
Made in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Preliminary flats, item forty. In the LLE subdivision containing four lots on twenty-four acres located off Bethesda Duplex Road in the second voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, the applicant is requesting deferral to the January twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting in order to allow the applicant more time to address staff comments. Staff concurs with this request.
We have a motion to defer. Motion made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Final flats, Ly Meadows LLE subdivision containing five lots on thirty-two point five-five acres located off of Span Town Road in the fifth voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. The applicant is requesting deferral to the January twenty-twenty-five meeting in order to have more time to address staff complaints. Staff concurs with this request.
Motion to defer?
Motion. Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Item number forty-three, Bailey Cove LLE subdivision containing five lots on forty-nine point seven-four acres located off of Columbia Avenue in the eleventh voting district. Staff?
Forty-two.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I think we skipped over item forty-two.
Forty-two.
I thought that was it. Okay.
Freeze.
I'm sorry, my mistake. Fair Farms LLE subdivision containing five lots on forty-two point four acres located off of Span Town Road in the fifth voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. The applicant is requesting deferral to the January twenty-twenty-five meeting. Staff concurs with this request.
Motion to defer?
Motion. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item forty-three, Bailey Cove LLE subdivision containing five lots on forty-nine point seven-four acres located off of Columbia Pike in the eleventh voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. This development is located east of Columbia Pike. You see the red arrow pointing to Columbia Pike to the west. Property is approximately forty-nine point seven-four acres. This is a large lot easement subdivision, creating five lots. And you see the lots in the brown and bordered by the brown and white. Access will be provided to all of the lots by fifty-foot ingress egress utility easement. You see the utility easement in the, or access easement in the red. Building envelopes have a two-hundred-foot separation for fire protection. Natural resource protections have been met. The water will be provided by HB and TS Utility District. Wastewater is handled via individual onsite septic, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, T-Square, Kelsey McGee, T-Square Engineering, representing the project.
Are you agreeable with the staff report? Are any changes?
Yes, sir. No changes to the staff report.
Okay. Any questions from commission on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item forty-five, forty-four has been withdrawn. Item forty-five is Gamble Design Collaborative Presentation of Proposed Mixed-Use Development
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Greg Gamble, and I'm with Gamble Design Collaborative, and I'm a land planner and landscape architect. And my client is John Powell, and we have the fortune tonight of presenting to you a master plan that we have been working on with county staff. Appreciate their time and input, and it does not fall on us lightly, the amount of time, effort, energy, and work that has gone into creating the Triune Special Character Area by the county, and I hope you appreciate this effort and the master plan tonight. Williamson County Land Use Plan established the Triune Character Area in two thousand and seven, and adopted the Triune Character Area in two thousand and thirteen. Followed up by a number of community outreach meetings, the county finalized the Triune Area Plan in two thousand and eighteen. In just June of this year, the county approved the site plan for Superior Wastewater System Sewer Facility, which enables the master plan process to begin for these properties. The vision of the Triune Character Area is focused on creating high-quality, non-residential development concentrated in and around historic crossroad intersection and the eight-forty interstate interchange to expand neighborhood-scale businesses and services. Community input through the envisioning process requested that future plans pursue the protection of rural character, preservation of open space and natural resources, and expand the neighborhood retail, restaurants, businesses that meet local needs. Character Area One is the dark green that you see on this plan, is intended to protect the rural character with low-density development. The commercial opportunities within the Triune Character Area are captured within Character Areas Two, Three, and Four. Character Areas Two and Three allow for uses like a grocery store, retail shops, office, hotel, in close proximity to eight-forty and Horton Highway. In addition to the commercial uses, they allow two homes per acre to integrate residential into a mixed-use neighborhood. Character Area Four supports predominantly residential uses, and is intended to be a transition areas between the commercial uses and the rural edge. The two hundred and twenty acres that we are looking at tonight have Character Areas Two located south of ninety-six, Character Area Three located north of eight-forty, and Character Area Four located on both edges, east and west, as transitions. All of this is made possible due to the approved site plan of Superior Wastewater Sewer Facility, which is planned to start construction this spring, and John Powell is here tonight to give you just a few minutes about the sewer facility. John?
Just push the triangle right there to advance to the next slide. Do you want to start on this one?
Yes, then I'll tell you to push. There's the easement.
Stand closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry. There's the easement line going from the proposed Triune Development over to Haley Lane where the sewer plant will be constructed. So let's go to the next one. Here's what I wanted to talk to you about tonight. I've had a few calls from state officials and a couple county people about the recent news where systems are failing in Tennessee. Very quickly, there's, when you design a regional sewer system, you have a collection, you have a treatment, a collection portion, a treatment portion, and then a dispersal portion. Those are the three major components of a sewer plan, along then with the design and construction of all those components. Just a few things. On the collection system, our utility likes to use gravity. We don't sell pumps, we're not in the pump business, and the systems we have right now have over seven hundred homes, none of which have a pump. A lot of, lot of systems will put pumps in a home, which creates a lifetime of electricity and a lifetime of replacing pumps and servicing pumps and inspecting pumps. We let the gravity work, and the gravity flows to area pump stations, where then it is then forced mained to the treatment plant. In Triune, we will utilize the gravity area as much as we can to these big pump stations. Also, in the, in the collection portion of a regional system, we use oversized collection septic tanks. I think there's a Mr. Britton from T-DAC here a few months back that said septic tanks treat the water about seventy-five percent of what it needs to be treated, then it goes to the treatment plant, which clarifies it more. We had problems with our existing plant, the first plant we had, and because of those problems, we saw them happening years ago. My team and I have traveled the nine different states, talked to operators of different technologies, and, and we learned quite a lot listening to what people, the problems people had. One of the problems we had in our treatment is that we couldn't see the whole treatment process. So when it fills up with sludge and everything, you don't know until it's a big crisis. So we wanted a treatment system that would monitor and handle sludge, and typically you get sludge in just raw sewage treatment, but you do get it in regular wastewater treatment. Particles go through and they build up over the years. So the treatment that we decided to use is a company called Biomicrobics. They're out of Kansas City. They have no salespeople, but they don't need any. As far as we're concerned, they're the best. In King's Chapel, for instance, where there's quite a bit of homes, we use one of their In King's Chapel, for instance, where there's quite a bit of homes, we use one of their treatment centers. And it is a treatment center that can handle raw sewage, but we're only handling wastewater. So it's more expensive, but it separates the sludge that will occur throughout the years. And we can handle that. In Triune, we're using Biomicrobics system also that separates sludge. A good practice management we're doing is the residential at Triune, which Greg is going to show you here in a little bit. We will have the collection tanks, septic tanks. The solids will stay there. And it those that waste stream will be really reduced from a heavy sewer waste stream that would be created from a hotel or a restaurant. So the hotels and restaurants in Triune, that raw sewage will go to the Haley Lane plant and be mixed with the wastewater streams from the residentials. So by the way, Biomicrobics, we looked at several plants that they had had in operation. And some of their big customers is the U.S. Navy, cruise ship lines. They have the technology to highly clarify water to be dumped into rivers, lakes, and the oceans. So the last thing is your drip fields. And as we disposal, the last element of the three stages of a of a system, the drip fields, we actually went to visit quite a bit of them looking for technology on how to treat waste. But many of the operators and the utilities we talked to said, well, it's really not the the treatment. It's the drip fields that we have problems with. I've seen pictures of drip fields that have minnows swimming in them, really bad. And then I'm looking at it. It looks like one of our front yards. I said, how did you fix this? And if the on several of the occasions, they listed a company out of Georgia that just focused on drip fields. And a drip field that has been built all across Tennessee, several Williamson County, looks like a ladder. So you have one side of the ladder is your inflow to the drip field. The other side of the ladder is your outflow back to the recirculation of and to get all the particulars out when you flush the Netaphen lines. So it just looks like a ladder. So you have one line going up, one line coming back with all the Netaphen lines, the drip field emitters in the middle. Right here on this this picture on the far, the bottom on both sides, you can see those pipes with white ends on them. Those are the Netaphen pipes, lines going through the drip fields. On the middle section, you can see individual pipes going to each individual drip line. This is important because you don't have the ladder. You have all these pipes going to the Netaphen lines. We can tell with the system we've constructed, we can tell within a few feet where we may have a leak or not have a leak. The computer tells us. So when the when the drip field's operating, if it gets too little water, that means there's a clog. If it gets too much, that means there's a break. The computer, when that happens, it shuts that line off and goes to the next line until we repair the line that's that's broken. There's over ninety-one miles of this white pipe you see in our in our drip field. And it will be more in at Haley Lane versus just thousands of feet if you did the ladder concept. So there's manifolds. There's several reasons for these lines. It's just not for the detection of the leak, but it's for other reasons that we don't have time for tonight. But there's there's reasons, a lot of different reasons why drip fields built this way have mitigated failure from drip fields almost completely. And so it has to do the vacuums of, for instance, when a zone goes on and then it shuts off, it creates a vacuum and it sucks dirt back up into Netaphen lines. That dirt collects over years and shuts the lines off. This this system has the individual lines and has valves that won't let that vacuum be created. Another thing that that you might have, if you had lines in the like if this floor was a drip field and you put lines through it, it's not going to be as flat as a floor. No one can build a drip field like that. And so there's going to be low points. So when when the lines go off, all the water would go to the lowest point of the drip field, and it would oversaturate that area of the drip field. Another thing our company does, we when we look at soils, we we determine, first of all, we go six feet down on our Pedron pits instead of three feet down that state requires because we have to know the best soils, where the best soils are, and really where the worst soils are in a drip field. Just like this floor, you might have different types of soils with different colored tiles. We know where the best soils are. And this system can can load those best soils a little heavier and reduce the worst soils and not load them so high. In a state, when you get your drip fields approved, they they think it's all one color tile. They see loaded the same rate, and they don't individually pick different areas of the drip field that that might take the the wastewater better. The last thing I'd like to say is is designing construction. We found, by talking to different utilities and operators, that we use people from three different states. One specializes in the design of the drip field. One specializes in the treatment. And others specialize in collection and putting it all together. So we use different people. We just don't use one engineering firm and say they they know everything. When you talk to when you get really get involved, these these people specialize in their particular parts of a design. And we were surprised that they all know each other. They they know when you if you have a pump problem, you go here. If you have this kind of problem, you go there. So we put together a really good team to design our system for Triune. The other thing I can say is construction. You have to really take take care of constructing a drip field. I have seen in the last year, I've seen someone that has a roll of Netaphen, that's the drip emitters with the Israeli emitters on them, tied to the back of a bulldozer. And they tie off this Netaphen line. And then they have a plow in the back of the bulldozer and a rod that puts the the Netaphen line in the dirt. And that is that is a construction designed for failure because the Netaphen line has manufacturer defects in it. So if you don't have a person on a vibratory plow with two other people behind it checking the line every inch as you go in, you won't find those defects. And if you're on a bulldozer putting it in, it stretches the line. And everywhere you have a stretch, those emitters are like riveted into the pipe. They'll crack and break loose, and you won't know it until years later when you have a saturated field. So the construction on a drip field is more delicate than one would imagine. And then again, we've we've found an installer that that's all he does is go around and install drip fields in the southeast. And he's the one one we use. Matter of fact, he was putting in a drip field up here today in Williamson County. And this is what his drip fields look like. So anyway, I wanted to assure you guys that we just don't build a sewer plant to build a sewer plant. We really get involved and study it. And we've studied this for years. Thank you.
As you can see, this is a big passion of John's, to be the best. The master plan, while thought about holistically, contemplates each of the zone requirements for uses, open space, and buffers separately. So we have to do separate calculations for the TCA two and TCA four districts. The planning commission, however, will only see the single-family residential layout in the initial concept plan and the preliminary plat. The commercial uses and townhome areas will be submitted as site plans. And due to the fragmented nature of the submittals to the planning commission, we wanted you to see the big picture first. And that's really why we're here tonight. Our commercial Main Street starts at the intersection of Horton Highway and Malachi Lane and travels west with one- and two-story structures planned for boutique retail and restaurants. There's several outdoor plazas that are integrated into the plan for outdoor dining and seating. At the terminus of the Main Street is a boutique hotel with several small cottages lining the backdrop of the hill. The grocery store is shown just to the south of Main Street with and meets the maximum requirement of square footage for the TCA three district. The commercial architecture is planned to resonate with the precedents established in Middle Tennessee with inviting shop fronts, pedestrian-scale buildings, and covered outdoor overhangs for outdoor dining. Small groups of townhomes will transition west and east from the commercial to the single-family homes, all anchored by programmed pocket parks. The architecture of the townhomes is planned to be high design with a variety of architectural details to establish a timeless character within the neighborhood. The single-family neighborhoods on the east and west are both anchored by Woodland Central Park with walking trails that connect the various parks throughout the residential areas. The single-family homes are planned to be it's planned to capture the best of Middle Tennessee architecture, using traditional materials of stone, brick, lap siding to provide a diversity of architectural styles. This master plan provides a total of forty-three percent open space. Fifty percent of the open space is in the residential areas, and twenty-five percent of the open space is within the commercial areas. The pocket park spaces are will be programmed spaces with playgrounds for recreation, lounge areas for community gatherings, and natural areas are planned with nature trails and pedestrian connectivity throughout the mass throughout the plan connecting the pocket parks. We are just at the beginning of setting the master plan in place and are striving for a plan that achieves a vision for the character of Triune. A traffic study has been prepared for this master plan, and it has been filed with city staff, and it's currently under review. And John, did you have something you wanted to add? Okay. And John and I are available to answer any questions that you may have. I know this is a lot to take in in a short period of time. But we plan on moving ahead with submittals in the near future.
Yes. To Main Street. So what are you referring to Horton Highway as Main Street? Or which road are you referring to as Main?
For lack of a better term, we have a kind of a commercial focused area, like a Main Street that you would see at Berry Farms, that would have smaller shops, pedestrian, activated pedestrian sidewalks.
So where where is that? You referred to it. I'm just wondering where it is from here.
Sure. Let's see.
What you consider Main Street.
This has a laser pointer on it, but I can't see it. Okay, so from the ancient Horton Highway going west to the hotel, that area right there.
Off of Malachi?
You got a slide that that showed that that might be useful.
I can.
There you go.
It's highlighted with that beige color there.
So the vision is?
Something similar to what is currently now at Berry Farms, right?
Probably not at that scale.
Right.
Smaller scales, you know, one- and two-story buildings. But as far as like from Tito's, that that street through there
Right.
To have walkable streets where buildings front the street, where outdoor dining is out on the sidewalks, where we have plazas that become places that that community can happen. Yes, ma'am.
Right. And the boutiques and the grocery.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
The Triune Special Area Plan, when it was when we were going through that. And I think our vision mostly was the look and feel of Berry Farms. We mentioned it many times. I mean, obviously, not the scale, but just the character and the look.
The quality of the architecture.
Quality, the architect, and just that look and feel of Berry Farms is what I think the people out there were really hopeful for.
Great. That's great. That's certainly what we want to bring to Triune.
Two questions. One in regards to the sewer and its capacity. When it's when the sewer plant's constructed, will it have capacity for everything that is outlined in this master plan? Or will it require amendment as we go? Question one. And question two, would you mind walking us through the phasing that you foresee at this moment?
Sure. I'm gonna let John answer the sewer question first.
Sure.
Personally, the sewer is has a capacity of three hundred thousand gallons a day. This right here will probably be around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand gallons a day. So
So everything depicted here
Yes.
You're saying has has a need for a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand gallons a day. And the sewer plant, when constructed, will have three hundred thousand.
To start. Yes, it will.
To start. With potential for more.
Yeah. We're actually going to start with a hundred and sixty thousand. And then as we get it running, then we'll turn on the other hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand gallon side. It they're separated just because we need waste and water to treat. And opening up the whole all of it at once would be impractical.
So you would have excess capacity to service more development out in this area?
Yes. Another about this much more.
About double.
Yeah. On phasing, we're going to do a residential first and get it started and maybe a hotel on the east side.
Walking through on the on the master plan where that's
Yeah.
Almost like a phasing plan, as it were.
Sure. So on the far left and the far right are the TC four areas where you see the single-family homes. Those are going to start so that they can start with the sewer plant. The hotel that is on the right side of Horton Highway would likely be the first commercial structure. And then the the Main Street buildings and the grocery store would follow up quickly behind those.
Station is our
That's right. Correct.
David, you mentioned that you're going to start out with a hundred and sixty thousand?
Yes.
Or you're going to build all of it, but you're only going to start utilizing the hundred and sixty? Or if not, when would you build the rest of it out?
As we we would build the rest of the plant as demand requires. We're spending the, for instance, the easements and the pipes going in there will handle more than the three three hundred thousand gallons a day. The treatment plant, we bifurcated, and we're building half of it at the beginning and the other half later on. But the it's a big concrete structure that's basically in the ground. We have dividing walls, so we'll operate one half of it first, and then we'll turn on the other half when we need to. And the consequence of the drip fields, we'll do a hundred and fifty thousand gallons of drip fields. And then three or four years later from now, we'll add the others.
I have another question about that. Would you open it up to the residents on Murphy Spurrow Road if they wanted to connect and and get off get off the septic tanks?
Yes, they they will. They will have it. Robin, that's an interesting question, too, because on that easement, it's a force main. You can't put a house into a force main. So we do plan a pump station along Highway ninety-six somewhere that the that that the collection could gravity flow to that pump station. And that pump station would then add to the force main going to the plant. There's already people talking to us about that, wanting to hook in.
Just out of curiosity, is it going to be something that would be affordable to those people? Because I know the whole grassland thing was Because I know the whole grassland thing was, you know, people could connect in, but it was gonna cost.
Right.
Like a lot of money and just, you may not, you may not know the answer to that.
I know the answer to that. And this has been quantified by Tennessee Public Utility Commission. It took us about six months. We gave them individual quotes and bids on what it's gonna cost to build this Triune sewer facility. And they regulate rates and territory. So we got a territory basically from on Highway 96 to where the Rutherford County line is over to where King's Chapel is. So in that, in that area, that's the area we have. They want to step further on this process and they, they don't want to call it a tap fee, but it's called a capacity fee. It's a one-time fee that if a house hooked in, the house is designed for 300 gallons a day use. It won't use that much, but that's what we designed it for. On that 300 gallons, the Tennessee Public Utility Commission came up with a rate of $51.54 per gallon. That, that rate adds up to about $15,400. So for someone to hook in, that's what it would cost. And that pays for the, all the drip fields, all the treatment plant, and for basically the capital improvement of the sewer plant. Then they would get a monthly sewer bill.
Okay.
Monthly sewer bills for residents are very, very low, in my opinion, which is what we want. On commercial, it's predicated on what kind of waste stream they create. Vineyard or something like that would be a very high waste stream. So they would be charged more. A CPA office would be much like a residential, it would be a very low waste stream. So as a commercial, they would get a different rate.
Okay, thank you.
Well, to piggyback on that, piggyback on that, who controls and how is that rate controlled in the future, moving forward?
The rate is controlled by T-PUC. The monthly rate for sewer bills is controlled by T-PUC. We turn in annual reports to them on the condition, financial condition of our utility and they determine whether we are earning too much or earning too little. We just went through a rate case with T-PUC a couple of years ago and it was determined, which they were correct, with that we were not charging enough. We were cash flowing, but we weren't making any money. And you're not allowed to make a lot of money as a regulated utility. But they, they made us increase our rates.
And what about the one-time capacity fee? How is that regulated and controlled in the future?
We, we show them who hooks in and how much we charge. That'll be in our annual reports by address. I might say that we had the lowest published sewer rate in the state of Tennessee for about 15 years. And now our rate is still lower than most public utilities.
Okay. I guess the questioning was if we have the capacity to do, double what we've got planned here, or if you've got the capacity there to do that, and something across the street wants to tie in, do you dictate what their capacity fee is or is that dictated by T-PUC?
It's dictated by T-PUC, what their, what their, what their capital charge is, the $51.54 per gallon. So that would change too. Let's, let's say if you're a facility that uses a lot of water, your charge is gonna be more for that capacity fee.
Right.
Or a capital fee than it will be for your monthly sewer rate.
It's based on septic family equipment, right?
It's, it's based on per gallon used per commercial or per residential. I just use residential because it's.
Sure.
They're designed for 300 gallons a day.
Okay. What, at what price, so the initial phasing of the homes, do we have a target price point for the first homes that are coming on proposed? Is it too early?
They're, one, one thing I can say is that in all the builders we've talked to, we're gonna sell lots to builders. They're all very excited and even the commercial people we've talked to, we want to really upscale it. We want it to look very nice. I don't want to say we want to look better than Berry's Farm, but I think we can make it better than Berry's Farm. And there, we want to high-end it. We want, we want to do high-end features and high-end architecture. We don't want to, we want to make a very special area, which will increase all the property values out there. But that's what we want to do.
True.
Thank you.
A question on the, your drip fields. The people have looked at this area, of course, you've worked in this area, they consider in the rock and, you know, because there's an awful lot of rock in the Triune area as far as those fields are concerned, how do they handle that?
Those, those, so the Haley Lane property we bought, there's 100, let's say 150 acres. And only 75 of those acres would we approve for our drip fields. The others were marginal and that's where we're gonna put a large lot subdivision and then nine other lots, based on one house per five acres. So, yes, we have, we have, we've studied those drip fields, starting three years ago. It took over, over a year to study the fields and figure out what was there. So fortunately, there's no rock where we're gonna put the drip fields. Or clay.
I have a question about, kind of what David was saying about pricing of homes. What about the townhomes and, I don't know if you're gonna do condos or just townhomes. They still gonna be the high end?
Yes.
So not really, not any kind of affordable type living out there at all?
The price people want for their property, it just, it's hard to make affordable living. Is it, was it affordable, you know, I still am in awe of what people pay for houses, but I, it's hard to make it. I think the, I think the builders we have will do the best they can, but I don't see any apartments or, we want to, we want to start this out with high-end homes and townhomes.
You're not doing apartments though, you're doing townhomes.
Townhomes. I said that we're not doing apartments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that, you know, when I think affordable living, we're not doing apartments. I don't think the character area is called for that.
I don't think it does either.
They didn't. So we can't do that there.
Good. Okay.
Anything else?
My last sewer question.
Be quiet. For, as far as the easements go, for your force main and whatnot, have you already procured those or what is?
We're working with Nolansville College Grove Water Utility. We probably have, 40% of them are through property we control. The other, we're working with Nolansville College Grove and getting an easement that both of us will employ. The sewer line has to be 10 feet away from the water line. And.
They can track next to each other?
They what?
They can track next to each other.
Yeah, they can track next to each other on the south side of 96, going towards Haley Lane. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your questions and again, we appreciate this opportunity to present to the commission tonight. So thank you and we'll see you here soon with a new, new submittal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year and Merry Christmas.
You too.
Before you, before you.
Is there anything else for the commission at this time?
I just want to mention real quickly, as you know, that in typical meetings, we have several items that are deferrals that the staff is recommending and that the applicant is, is recommending as well. We're gonna start putting those on the consent agenda. If it's a staff recommendation and the applicant concurs and vice versa, we'll put those on consent so you can vote, vote on those as a whole. If there's not agreement by either the county or the applicant, then we wouldn't put it on consent. But we feel like this will be a move that'll make the meetings more efficient. That's it.
Anybody else? At this time, we'll close the meeting then and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Our meeting is adjourned.